Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Parzak?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press in the Kate May County Herald on January 6th, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start the work session with public safety.
We hear from the court administrator.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Everything is going fine. The judge is going to be sworn in. Actually, he might have been sworn in on Friday, but by this week, when he shows up for court, I will have his signed paperwork to get up to the state and things will move along. Court's down to, will be two weeks next month, and then after that, once a month. Any questions for me? Nope.
Thank you, Debbie. Chief Stanford?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
There's a report for the fire department for the month of July. We had forty-nine fire calls for the month. That's the highest number for the past three years. Eighty-nine EMS calls. The calls were four building fires, three cooking fires, nine medical assists, one motor vehicle accident, one gasoline spill, five natural gas leaks, six arcing wires, one medevac, three cover assignments, twelve fire alarms, and three carbon dioxide alarms. That's our report.
Is there anything unusual, Roger, from last year?
No, we've been online on track as of previous year. July was an anomaly with a couple more, but everything's still in line. Nothing crazy.
Thank you, Chief.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The monthly report for the police department for July, there were three hundred ninety-six motor vehicle stops and ten adults were arrested. In terms of an update on personnel, we will have one officer leaving on Sunday for military basic training from Sunday until sometime January or February of 2019. Due to the, also due to the recent resignations of two officers, we did conduct a hiring process amongst our current Class II crop of officers, and two names were selected by the hiring committee to move on in the process. They have a psychological test on Wednesday of next week. Our hope is to have the Public Safety Committee interview these two candidates sometime in September, and then if all goes well with the approval, we hope to swear them in sometime in September as well. And they would then attend recruit training in January to Kate May County Police County from January to June of 2019. In order to cover the loss of the officer leaving for military basic training, I'd like to submit a personnel requisition to carry one SLEO into the fall, just to cover his duties. So we'll keep our general Class Twos till September 30th, pending one or two that have to leave prior for school, and then I'd like to keep one over until at least November, the end of November, and then I think December, we should be okay with coverage.
Are you gonna stagger the two in the academy, or will they both go?
No, we're just gonna get it over.
They're just gonna go?
In terms of building update, Captain Palmer and I actually attended a meeting today for progress. Everything's going along perfectly. I don't have any issues to report in terms of the progress of the building. We walked through, and, you know, I sound like a broken record every month getting up here, but it really is nice. It's truly nice. I believe they should start painting sometime next week, so everything's going along well. Before I conclude my report, I'd just like to address, give you a recap basically of the beach and alcohol violations, things like that. As you all know, we've stepped up our visible presence down there beginning this year as opposed to other years. And I'll be honest with you, I thought everything was going along great. I hadn't heard really many complaints, and then at the beginning of this past month, I'd seem to get an uptick with complaints. So in that respect, you know, you sit back and kind of reevaluate and think, wow, maybe things aren't going quite as well as we thought. So we assigned plainclothes officers on three separate occasions for about a four-hour patrol each time. So, forgive me, let me back up. From Memorial Day until current day, we've issued ten summonses for open alcohol on the beach. That ten include nighttime patrol though as well, so 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, things like that. So there was seven between Memorial Day and current day when we started the plainclothes details. When we started doing the three, we issued three open container violations. The first detail, we had two, the second was one, and the third, there weren't any. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, let you know that we still are out there. We will continue to have plainclothes people out there when we can do it, and we'll go from there. Overall, though, you know, I think it's going well, but for those complaints that were received at the beginning of the month, which, you know, then we, like I said, we've reevaluated and, you know, changed plans a little bit. I think for next year, you know, maybe we'll start the plainclothes thing a little earlier. And that's, I think that's all I have. Yes, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I've seen the, I told the chief, I've seen his marine patrols out this summer, and I told him just this afternoon, we've got to get him a faster boat.
And we do not.
We really want to apprehend people. Okay, Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
We have this draft drone ordinance that I'd like to just distribute to everybody for consideration, and perhaps we'll bring it forward for first reading at the next meeting. So if you have any comments on it, please provide them to Jill. Essentially, it allows for flying a drone if it's permitted. If you have a commercial reason for doing so, you can get a permit from the borough. Otherwise, it's prohibited within the confines of the borough, unmanned aerial vehicles, drones.
Have you had any thought to invasion of privacy?
That's why we're doing, that's one of the reasons we're doing this, yeah.
I mean, with the drones flying over somebody's pool, or...
It prohibits it.
Right. I don't, I'm not sure I understand that.
It's part of this?
Yes.
I think that's exactly the premise behind this, is to prevent that, because I've seen it.
I've seen it.
I've seen drones coming down the bayfronts, just cruising. You don't know where they're coming from, and then they end up somewhere six, seven blocks away.
But even if they have a permit, it wouldn't be acceptable to do that.
For a commercial purpose, I think.
Well, if, if, if part of your business as a photographer is to take pictures of events, for example, the Chamber of Commerce is running some kind of event, or the borough wants to hire somebody to take pictures at Ninety-Sixth Street, I mean, you, you have to give them some benefit of the doubt that they're not going to go invading people's privacy. This is their business, it's of commercial interest. This, this is aimed at, at the guy, you know, the typical recreational drone owner who just likes to fly his drone around, or her drone around.
So this is basically for photographers and real estate and...
No, this isn't for them. This, this prohibits people from using drones or unmanned aircraft within the borough unless you have a permit and are recognized as a, a commercial entity, that this is your business to do this. So that the normal homeowner cannot just go out and, and fly one for recreation. And it includes the point. I mean, the point's mentioned in there specifically.
The point is already covered. The beach is already covered. In a previous ordinance from many years ago, you could not fly anything with whatever, like those airplanes years ago that used to do this, however that's ordered, but, I mean, it definitely should not be the beach.
Right, I added it into this ordinance too, just so we had the double shot. Yeah.
It begs the question, what's our limitation mark on height for our jurisdiction, and then also say, perhaps out over the bay? How far does our jurisdiction extend if, let's say, a drone's forty feet off of my bulkhead, which is clearly not on, beyond my property line, but is out over the inner coast?
So in the navigable waterway, it's not our jurisdiction?
Right.
But the, the operational requirements, Item D, clearly address flying into the airspace of private lands, and I think that's what the concern is, so that any intrusive activity where you would fly it over a person's private property would be prohibited by this ordinance.
I guess there's obvious limits to what we can prohibit, but I'm familiar with the technology, and I'll tell you what, if you have a drone that's, you know, forty feet off of my property, and the camera technology that's on there today, you could see what we're cooking in our kitchen. I'm just, I think there's limits as to what we can do. I'm just stating the obvious, that we have our limits, so I don't know if there's any other way to enforce this with, in conjunction with the Coast Guard or whoever, if it, if it comes to that. I mean, it hasn't been rampant, so I don't think it's a big problem, but...
Yeah, you can only do what's within your...
Right, exactly. It's worth consideration.
Your responsibility.
Exactly.
So this is the best we can do at this point. Okay? Sandy?
Good afternoon. This month, we had seven rescues, five EMS calls, there were four police calls, and eleven lost children were found. We have begun to lose guards as they are returning for college and sports. We normally have sixteen stands guarded, like in the middle of July. There will be less than half that number open towards the end of this month, so I urge people to call the headquarters, find out where we have guards on duty, and then maybe we can put it on the sign out in front of Borough Hall. And we hope to have a few guarded beaches after Labor Day weekend, but it will depend on if we have adequate personnel. And again, we'll, we'll know as we get closer to the end of the month. And that's my report.
How many less than sixteen are you looking at? You said you normally have sixteen?
Anywhere from five to seven stands.
Total?
And we don't really have sixteen, yeah. It seems worse than ever this year. The school, the high school sports are starting, I think the official date in New Jersey was the thirteenth, and colleges just seem to be earlier and earlier, and we're just left with a fraction of what we normally have when we're in normal operation.
So, so beginning like this weekend?
We'll start to get short. We should be able to keep everything open through this weekend, but we'll start having beaches unguarded after that. Right up until right before the week, on Labor Day weekend, we should be fine. A number of the guards can return.
There was an article just today in the Herald, and I want to say that it was the Wildwood Beaches that are doing exactly the same thing, but there was an article listing the beaches that are going to be protected. So unless you're going to rotate those beaches, if you're going to keep the beaches the same, perhaps if you give a list to Vince, he may be able to take care of that.
Sure. It's difficult to know precisely until we get near that, the actual day, because some people, they can make it down, others can't make it, they may not have a practice on a certain day or something.
Right.
So, and we try to keep, we, we don't really rotate, because we just try to keep the more crowded beaches open, so we're accommodating as many people as possible.
So this, this is an external problem this year, right? We, we did, we rearranged at your, at your suggestion, the way we do bonuses and whatnot at the end of the year to keep people later, and that, I guess, worked somewhat last year, but now this year, it's not...
It would be even worse, because they, they're staying when they can. I mean, there's more of an incentive to work in August, even with the way it is.
So it is working. What, what was done is, is making it better, but it's...
It just, it keeps a few more people around. It's not dramatic. If anything, it may even be less costly. But when someone goes to college in South Carolina and their move-in date is this date, it really wouldn't matter what, what we do.
Just kudos to you and the Beach Patrol and the Beach Tag Inspectors. All last week, I took the week off. I had family renting two different houses in town. We were on the beach Saturday, Sunday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Tagged every day. There was some, there's been some reports that, like, some of the taggers don't approach large groups. There was fifteen of us, we were approached, dealt with the guards on quite a few occasions for different reasons. Wonderful, professional, customer service was great, it was just all, it was just a great experience to sit back and kind of watch it from a vacationer's point of view, and getting some feedback and kind of hiding and watching, and it was, I'm telling you, it was great. And this is Ninety-Sixth Street Beach, so it's the crowded one, it's the busy one, you know, and it was, it was good experience, and everybody professional and top-notch.
Thank you, all pass it along.
Thanks, Sandy. I guess that's it. That, that concludes the public safety. JT's not here.
Thank you. Recreation and tourism.
I don't see Marat.
Neither do I. Is she away?
She usually does go away right after, right after the activity.
She is off all this week.
Okay. All right. Natural Resources? Not on. Natural Resources, Lenore, Christina, Jill? Any order you want?
Okay, I think Lenore was just gonna kind of give it an update summary of how everything went at the Bird Sanctuary with the tours and at the Point.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hard to believe we're winding down. I don't know, it's kind of strange. Things are going well, the tours are still going on at the Bird Sanctuary and, and doing well. We have, the docents are still on call through, through Labor Day, so that, that will continue uninterrupted through Labor Day. The stewards are still down at the Point, again, through Labor Day. Pretty much every day, they're down there talking to folks and helping manage bird disturbance. The colony down there is doing outstanding. We're gonna hear a little bit more about that shortly. I've been giving you updates. There's a beautiful black skimmer colony down there, a lot of great fledged birds. The migrant birds are starting to come in, so we're seeing shorebirds coming in that have already decided they're heading south, so they're, they're on the beaches as well. So we're managing both beach nesting birds that are hopefully largely staying inside the, the fencing areas, but we also have quite a few birds that are in the intertidal area and feeding, as I said, on their way south. The red knots, there's quite a few red knots in the area as well, heading south. Some of them are juveniles. We, I believe you have a memo that Jill sent out, the colony, the black skimmer colony that's doing incredibly well is still having quite a few chicks. There are, I'll let, I'm gonna turn it over in a minute to our friends from DEP that work on the site every day, and we have quite a few chicks out there, and those chicks will not be fledged prior to, prior to Labor Day weekend. So there's gonna be a conversation, a discussion about the need to consider whether or not it's prudent to open the beach to beach-driving vehicles when we have unfledged chicks. And just to remind you, an unfledged chick is a, is a chick that still cannot fly, so they're under the parents' care, they move around on the beach, but they have limited mobility. So with that, I don't know if we want Christina Davis, if I can introduce, she's the endangered non-game species program coordinator for NJDEP, and spends a lot of her time windswept on that beach.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to talk to you a little bit today about the situation down at the Point. I don't know how many of you have been out there, but it has been a spectacular year. I started working for Fish and Wildlife in 2002 as a seasonal, and Stone Harbor was my site, so it's a place that has a lot of emotional connection for me, and I've watched that site fluctuate up and down. We have good years and we have bad years. And if you recall from any Lenore's reports from last year, it was a very bad year last year, of all the species that nested out there, and this was hundreds and hundreds of nests altogether, only one nest hatched of all those species, and one oyster catcher chick fledged. That was it. This year, we're having a good year, which I'm very happy to report. We had three piping pear, three pairs of piping plovers, they fledged two chicks between them. Not spectacular, but better than zero. They're also the last three pairs that are left in all of Kate May County, so it's a very important spot for them. Oyster catchers did very well. We had twenty-four pairs, they fledged twenty-two chicks. Great. Least turns was difficult. We had a lot of birds that nested here, but we had some, some major predation by cat and laughing gall that we weren't able to get those birds through. Skimmers, on the other hand, have done very well. They're a very late nesting bird, so when they do well, this is not unusual, that it's late in August, and there are even some birds still on eggs. So our concern at this point is opening up the Point to recreational vehicle use and those chicks being run over. They are a state-endangered species, that means folks would be liable to a take under ENSKA, under the Endangered Non-Game Species Conservation Act, and the borough could also have some liability for allowing that activity to happen. So it's certainly not something I'm coming with a threat. We have an excellent relationship with Stone Harbor, and we're so pleased with the coordination and cooperation, but instead to ask that you guys would consider an extended closure for that site, so that we don't get ourselves into a situation where a take occurs. And again, just so you understand a little bit about black skimmer biology, those chicks are hatching, the day they hatch, they're able to walk around. Now, they are relating and needing the adults to feed them, so they're not like plovers going down the shoreline, but they do wander. So we have the area fenced, but they're not gonna stay in that fenced area, and if you go down there now, you'll see that already happening. The, the larger chicks are wandering around outside of what we would consider the, the heart of the colony. So that is the, you know, we're proposing is to ask for an extended closure. We don't have an exact date right now, because birds are still on eggs. Once they hatch, it's about three and a half to four weeks till they can fly, and because they're a colonial nester, we don't know exactly when those eggs were laid. There's many eggs in an area, so we can't keep track individually the way we can for oyster catcher and plover and give you an exact date. But it should be sometime shortly, so at the most, if they hatch today, it would be the end of September, but we would be able to stay updated and keep you updated on the progress if the birds failed, if things didn't work out. Of course, a closure could be lifted as soon as that happened, but as long as there's unfledged birds on the site, there is a possibility for take by vehicles running them over.
Questions?
Does it require an ordinance change? Or a resolution? The dates are in the ordinance, so...
If you look at Jay on the handout that we have of the ordinance of 156, Jay does permit such a closure determined by Natural Resource Committee to be necessary for the protection of wildlife.
That can be done by a resolution.
Then you could do it right there. It's not gonna require any bit of a, okay.
And what you're saying, I think our beach opens to other vehicles on the first of October?
The Point opens on Labor Day, I believe, right?
Right. So the Point, for some reason, has been the first thing opened, and does anyone have a challenge with opening it on October 1st this year because of what we're facing? Giving you the month of Oc, the month of September?
Mm-hmm. That would be great. And then if it's a little bit later than that, we would, you know, come back and discuss with you, but I, I'm hopeful that that will, that will be enough, that that will get us there, that there won't be unfledged. But we won't know until those last, and there's only five nests that we know of right now to hatch, they really should be hatching anytime, so October 1st would be a reasonable date, but we can't guarantee that they will all be fledged by then.
But when we give a, I'm all for October 1st, that's fine, but if we give a vehicle permit, and then you're gonna come back at the latest minute and say, now it's October 15th, or...
Well, they can't get their permits yet, can they? They don't get their permits until...
They don't until September 1st.
September.
Yeah, but Ms. Davis is saying that it could be extended.
Yeah, I think if anything we sell, we would have to let them know ahead of time that there was the potential, but...
Right.
If we say October 1st with the potential of a week after, maybe a week or so after that, I think we would be sensible.
Yeah, put a written notice with it, so that they can't say they didn't hear it, or whatever, but I don't, I can't imagine somebody would be that upset over a situation like this, that it's finally coming back to life.
And any extension beyond October 1st would just be at the Point?
That's right.
And it would not be on the other front?
Yeah. And we will be able to have that information to you, as soon as those nests hatch, we'll be able to calculate a date. We just don't know until they hatch.
What's the price for that permit, Sue? For the vehicle?
I don't know, what is it?
A big enormous. Price of the permit?
Fifty dollars for the season.
Fifty for the season.
I think, I think these are extenuating circumstances here, so I think we extend it to one October. Seems to be the logical thing to do. There will be some people upset, but always are, but this is, in my opinion, the right step.
And I would say, whatever year this was, that this was done, it was done in planning the future. I mean, thinking, thinking ahead of a situation that we now have is actually right here, so...
So can we do it by resolution today, or will we be doing it then at the next?
Next meeting, I would think.
Do it at the next meeting by resolution? After. So we're just gonna close, keep it closed until the next meeting, which is the fourth?
Right, so we're all ready. I think we have to do it tonight.
Yeah.
We have to do it tonight, so we can do it by resolution tonight?
Yeah.
Otherwise, we miss the date.
Correct. We have two meetings a month, the first, the first and third Tuesday, so this would be the Tuesday that we would be doing it.
I think...
September 1st is Saturday.
I think, I thought it was Labor Day. Yeah. Right, it's the same day, yeah, because I think it says Labor Day in the ordinance.
Your pleasure?
I think we should do it.
If we can do it tonight, and then keeps it nice and clean, and then it's done, that's what I would suggest. It'd give people a notice.
Yeah, I think that's...
A few weeks.
If I have a moment, I think it's important to, we've had some meetings and discussions with the folks that drive on the beach, and we've had a lot of communication with them about the way we wanted to, as a community, address Stone Harbor Point and find ways to have people work on conservation and be at the Point, and I think it's important that we think about how we message for this, and make sure people understand why that is, get some information on the website. So I, I would think it would be beneficial to try to do this tonight, so that you have information and you can get information out, and it's not all trying to happen on the same day, and just to maintain that open dialogue with, with the folks that are the users down there.
You can make a quick resolution. Okay. Then we'll plan that for today.
That's great. And if there are questions or complaints that you guys get and you don't feel like answering, you can always send them off to us. Jill has our contact information, we're used to those, those type of discussions, so we're happy to field any of those. Really appreciate it.
The only thing I wanted to add is a picture's worth a thousand words.
I was just reading my mind.
Can you provide a picture of these fledglings that we're protecting? Because I think, it's like anything, show what we're doing.
I think it'll, that will be really helpful.
Not just words.
Yep. And if, like Lenore said, any of the groups that you already work with proactively to reach out, that, we have found that at other sites, that's really helpful. If it's not something they read in the paper, find out about that, that's, you know, we're reaching out, letting you know, and...
It's something to brag about.
Yes, it really, you guys should feel very proud. There's only three skimmer colonies in the state that have been successful at all, and one, a mink, just found, so we're not sure that one's gonna hang in. So it's really just here and up at Seaview Harbor Marina and Longport, that's it for the whole state, so we're really, really pleased with the progress this year. Thank you all for that support.
Thank you. Anything else on natural resources, Jill?
Nothing else?
That's it?
That's it? I'll update you on the meter discussion at the Chamber of Commerce get-together last week. Ray was there, Charles, myself, Jill, and probably, what would you guess, maybe twenty-five to thirty merchants, and they shared with us the results of their survey that they had sent to their membership concerning extending the meters, being operational until December 31st, and similar to the Chippewa results, overwhelming opposition to the idea. However, there was also a lot of good discussion with some of the merchants there who... However, there was also a lot of good discussion with some of the merchants there who people feel their employees are the ones that are taking up this prime parking, and everybody in the room agreed to, to work with one another and to encourage their employees to use the parking lots. And also, there was some good ideas thrown out that one of the focus groups for the master plan is the Chamber of Commerce. So Paul Cates will be meeting with that focus group and discussing some parking options, what they think might work, and some of the ones that were thrown out that were kind of interesting, that could really work, is no overnight parking, and the 200 block of 96th Street and along 3rd Avenue was one. Enforcement of the three-hour limitation was another one. One of the things that was mentioned is that patrons of the reeds off-season prefer to have their car close to them, so they don't use their lot. So one of the things that would discourage any of that would be the no overnight parking. So coming out of the group was some good ideas, and everybody, the discussion was good. So Paul will be working with them, as I said, as a focus group, to continue to kind of move forward with whatever ideas some people may have considering the parking. And also to, as you, as you push people out of 96th Street and 3rd Avenue, push them into parking lots and not into the residential neighborhoods. So it was a good discussion, and it was interesting to get those results from the merchants. So overwhelming, nobody wants the parking meters extended, no one. So just thought I would show that information with you. If you want to add anything, Jill, somebody's waving their hand out there in the peanut gallery. Yes, Grant? And better signage, that was one of the other things that was brought up.
More signs. Anyway, that would, if, if you were to limit parking to no overnight parking, that would help us a lot with sweeping the streets, especially in the business district, and snowplowing at night.
Right.
So that's it. You know, that's, and anybody who lives in any of the apartments or residential things over top of stores, they could still, in the off-season, use the closest parking lot. And there is close parking lots to all of the units, so it's a doubly good reason, because we get to help Grant and Public Works at the same time.
Well, and keep the streets clean.
And keep, help Grant keep the streets clean. So that, I thought that was a pretty good suggestion that we can look at.
I have a comment. My suggestion would be that from now on, before we pursue council discussion on something like this or anything else recommended by an outside group, we first find out if their group is really behind it, because as it turned out, this came from the chamber, and the chamber really didn't want it. So perhaps the people who were representing the chamber really were not representing all of the chamber, and I just think it would be wise for us to have the surveys in hand before we take, or before we're asked to take action.
Because it seemed like once there was the threat per se of action, more people disagreed than initially, because initially, you sit in those meetings and everybody's in agreeance on it.
They were.
They were in agreeance on it, and then you do a survey and they're not. It was almost like, once, the one thing that I will say is it, at least it got the conversation going to every group too. So it was overwhelming. So we've got our answer. But there is something to be said for that mentor.
I'd like to comment at the latest council meeting from someone in the audience that said, this is not a parking problem, this is a walking problem, that people are not walking two blocks to the store they want to go to. So if we can convince them to park, you know, at our lot out there and then walk in. And it's a good people problem, but they do have to walk. Absolutely.
Anything else?
You know, at the, we're going to, over the winter, you know, we have this recurring problem of the 3rd Avenue and 96th Street in July and August, the congestion, and we've had this, now we have the bike lane issue, came up this summer, and we have the bikes on the sidewalks, chief, that, you know, Angelo had sent us an email about that incident that he witnessed, and, and I, you know, I don't, I don't like signs, I don't, do we have any signs on, in the business district about bicycles on...
We did, we put some more up in the 300 block.
Oh, you did?
They did.
Okay.
And the day, and the day that they put them up, as I was leaving, I saw two bikes go right past the sign. I'm like, well, that was...
Right, right.
It happens.
And as I've said...
But we did put them up.
As, you know, we'll continue to wrestle with this over the winter, the Public Safety Committee, but I, as I've said before, it kind of comes down to a courtesy issue with the public and just paying attention to what you're doing and, you know, being courteous to your fellow pedestrians or bicyclists or joggers or whatever. I don't know how to even begin to propose legislation to fix this stuff, you know, it's, but we'll see, maybe some great idea will come forth and we'll execute it. But I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're aware that these problems exist and we're struggling for a solution to them. That's just a general comment.
Anybody else have anything? We could take advantage of this time to go into closed session. Resolution 2018S?
158.
158.
I'd like to make that, I'd like to offer the resolution, 2018S-158 for adoption.
Second? Second? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafchek?
Yes.
Mr. Parzer?
Yes.
Want to say we're going to closed session? What's the record?
We'll be going to closed session with regard to potential contractual matter, which is recognized as a reason, legitimate reason to go into closed session.
And we will be right back out. Not right back, but we will be back.